Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 15, 2011. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council. Would you please rise, join me in a pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing after the pledge for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like you to take a moment to remember, in whatever manner is appropriate, the citizens of Sendai, Japan, all the residents of Japan, and in fact, all of those whose lives were impacted by the earthquake and tsunami. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DeStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 1 council meeting and the March 8 council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
And I'll second.
Moved in second. Are all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, a proclamation recognizing the Board of Realtors. Mary?
Very well. How are you?
Yeah. Whereas Florida Open House Weekend is the second annual statewide open house weekend, and is being sponsored by the 115,000 members of Florida Realtors. Whereas Florida Open House Weekend will offer buyers the convenience of touring dozens of homes for sale in one weekend. Whereas Florida Open House Weekend offers people a convenient way to see as many homes as they want in one weekend, and give Realtors a chance to be part of a fantastic effort to match the buyers with the sellers. Whereas Flagler County Association of Realtors will kick off Open House Weekend with a State of Real Estate panel discussion, open to the public. Whereas blue balloons featuring the Realtor R. in white will denote those homes that are part of the statewide open house campaign. Whereas Flagler County Association of Realtors will conduct open houses at an estimated 250 or more homes in Flagler County. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, proudly recognizes March 26 through March 27, 2011, as Flagler County Open House Weekend, dated the 15th of March. John Nets, Mayor.
Who's receiving this?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. The Flagler County Association of Realtors is very excited about our second annual open house weekend. This is a statewide event. There'll be houses open throughout the state of Florida, hosted by the Florida Realtors on that weekend. Also, Welcome Home Week is March 21 through 27. That was proclaimed by Governor Scott yesterday, and we look forward to a successful weekend, and thank you very much for the proclamation.
Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing April as Water Conservation Month. Mr. Mormon.
The proclamation reads, whereas water is a basic and essential need of everyday living, every living creature, and whereas the City of Palm Coast is working together with the State of Florida, the St. Johns River Water Management District, other governments, water supply utilities, to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas April is typically a dry month in Florida when water demands are increased. And whereas the City of Palm Coast encourages and supports water conservation through various programs, outreach, and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by conserving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And whereas the City of Palm Coast is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation measures and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. Adopted May 15, signed, John Nets, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Vice Mayor Meeker.
If I thought about how to warm my waters.
Is it a Harley that you guys ride?
Actually, I ride a Honda Mecan.
I ride the Yamaha FJR. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation for more than 750,000 people in Florida. And whereas it is important that drivers of all vehicles be aware of one another and learn to share the road and practice courtesy. And whereas motorcycles provide a means of transportation that uses fewer resources, causes less wear and tear on public roadways, and increases available parking areas. And whereas it is important that the citizens of Florida be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the American bikers aimed towards education, abate of Florida. Vintage Chapter, representing the cities of Palm Coast, Bonnell, Flagler Beach, St. Augustine, and St. Augustine Beach, as well as unincorporated areas within the counties of Flagler and St. Johns, is actively promoting the safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motor awareness of motorcycles. And whereas it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to share the road with motorcycles and to honor motorcyclists -- or and to honor motorcycles' many contributions to the communities in which they live and ride. Now therefore be it also resolved by the City of Council of Palm Coast, that the month of May 2001 be officially designated as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Palm Coast, signed as 15th day of March 2011. Hello, young lady, how are you? Would you like to say something? I teach here.
I want to thank the mayor and the board. Just want to let you know, we have a safety program that we are open to come to any civic organization, school, or business to give any safety class free of charge anytime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number five, ordinance relating to mass polling location for the 2011 election. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance to the City of Palm Coast, Florida. Authorizing City of Palm Coast 2011 municipal election to be conducted at six mass voting or polling locations is provided for in the interlocal agreement between the City of Palm Coast and the Flagler County Supervisor of Elections, provided for conflict severability and effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is actually the implementation ordinance for a decision that was made a few weeks ago when we signed the new contract with the Supervisor of Elections. As you will recall, we have had 21 polling places. Each one of those requires people to work during workday, they require the training, all the equipment, et cetera. Supervisor Elections proposed a different approach this year that would save a substantial amount of money. We're talking, if we have to hold two elections, over $100,000 versus this cost, which will reduce that less than half, I believe, but it's a substantial savings. It is reducing it to six polling places, but you do not have to vote at your precinct. In other words, it is, that's why they call it mass polling, where you have the convenience of voting at any one of the six locations. So if it's closer to work, you know, you can go directly from work to the polling places. So in some ways, it will be more convenient for people. There will need to be a strong education campaign to let people know where the six are, they're spread out throughout the community. This ordinance just implements that from a legal standpoint, and that you've, action you've already taken. With that, would be happy to try answering questions.
Council questions. Seeing none, let's open the meeting for the public. Enter from the public, which should be heard on agenda item number five.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Let me ask you one question. If you're going to vote in a place that's not your polling place, how do they check to see if you're who you are, or you think you are, or you might be?
We got an answer, Jack, thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and go back to council. But first, Mr. Reichman, Mr. Landon, how do they know that you are who you say you are?
I think that goes back to a question or a discussion we had last time, and the difference between precincts and polling places. Normally, as the mayor indicated at the beginning of our discussion, we have 21 polling places, and that corresponds to the 21 precincts. We still have 21 precincts, but as allowed by state statute, now we're going to have six mass polling places. So with, pursuant to the interlocal that was previously agreed to between the City of Palm Coast and the Supervisor of Elections. The Supervisor of Elections will coordinate with the employees and the volunteers who work at these six mass polling places. So they'll have all the information. So no matter who comes in, they'll know from the records exactly who that is, and of course, the standard type of identification will be required, and so the process will be the same for anyone that goes to vote in any of these six polling locations. It will, excuse me, and it'll be, it'll be conducted by the Supervisor of Elections.
Virginia.
Take your photo ID with you.
Confirm. It's all done electronically, so.
Correct. You get machines come in, you'll register, it'll, the machines will all speak to one another at the six polling locations in a matter of seconds, so you can't jump from polling location to polling location and vote more than once.
So Jack, if you're thinking about voting more than once of all six of them, it doesn't --
I was thinking about that.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way, so.
Six Jack Harrells.
No, Jack, you can't vote early and vote often.
At one time. It's a thought, not the copy.
And let me remind people that in addition to these six polling places, there are two other options. You have the option of asking, requesting for an absentee ballot, which many folks do, and you will have the option of voting early as well, so. Mrs. DeStefano.
Has it been decided where the early voting going to take place?
That is coming up.
That's next item, or?
Next item?
Uh, two.
Something along the line.
Number seven.
Okay.
Mr. Meeker.
Mr. Mayor, is, does, does this change anything in any way for our overseas veterans in how they would be allowed to vote in this?
My understanding is no.
Okay, good.
No. Everything remains the same except where. The identification procedures are the same, the questions on the ballot are the same, it's just where you're filling it out. Any other council questions, comments? Is there a motion regarding agenda item number five?
I move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, an ordinance amending the City of Palm Coast Charter relating to election years. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance to the City of Palm Coast, Florida. Submitting to the electors of Palm Coast, a proposed amendment to the charter of the City of Palm Coast at the City of Palm Coast Municipal Election to be held in 2011. Providing for a revision to Section 8 Elections, subsection 4, Schedule for Regular Elections and Primaries. Providing ballot, title, summary, and text for the proposed amendment. Providing for the call of a referendum election. Providing for direction to the city clerk for adjustment of concurrence terms. Providing for conflict severability and effective date for approved amendment. Providing for codification and an effective date for the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is another item for both convenience and significant cost savings. And this one really does save a lot of money because when you are on the ballot with, or your election for municipal seats, in this case, City Council and Mayor, are on the ballot with other entities, including the county, federal, state, you obviously have a lot lower cost per entity because it's spread out. So this is actually an amendment that has to be approved by the voters. So what this ordinance does is place this proposal on the ballot for this September. The language is really quite simple. We added the beginning part that City Council asked for, and the language is in order to provide savings in the cost to conduct city elections and enhance voter turnout, should the charter, meaning the city charter, be amended to schedule regular elections to correspond with state elections and primaries to be held in even numbered years. As you know, right now, municipal elections are odd number years, the off years for state and federal elections. And therefore, our mayor, city council elections are on a ballot by themselves, and therefore the higher cost. Also, lower turnout, obviously. This is very common for cities that have noticed the low turnout for municipal elections, that if they actually correspond with state and federal elections, the voter turnout is substantially higher, obviously. The ordinance does one other thing, because this affects your terms, and because if the voters approve this come this September, then we would not have an election in 2013. The election would be for, the 2013 seats would be in 2014. Also, we obviously would not have an election in 2015, that would be in 2016. And that is part of this ordinance that clarifies how the transition would work. So those of you that are elected this year, your term would be to 2016. The two seats that are currently not up for this, this year, but up two years from now, it will be three years from now. By simplest way I can state that. And then from then on, it's the standard four-year term. The elections are every, every other year, even years, with the same staggered, two council seats each election, and every four years, a mayor election. It's all, I think as simple as I can place it. It's actually going to be complicated trying to explain to people what the difference is, but be happy to try and answer any questions.
Okay. The bottom line is that this is something that requires voter approval.
Yes.
Council questions. Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public, and for the public, which should be heard on agenda item number six. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I move adoption.
Does this ordinance be approved?
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, resolution authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute an amendment interlocal agreement with the Supervisor of Elections. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, when you approved the contract with the Supervisor of Elections a few weeks ago, it did include a provision for early voting. As is, as is always standard here, the early voting is held at the Supervisor Elections office, and then oftentimes also held at the library. In an effort to save costs, because that is kind of the theme here right now, the Supervisor Elections proposed that we only hold the early voting at the Supervisor Elections office, which is at the County Administration Building in Bonnell. Received quite a bit of feedback about having an election for Palm Coast outside of Palm Coast. City Council asked us to look at what it would take to move from the Supervisor Elections office to the Flagler County Library there at Palm Coast Parkway in Bel Air. It's still very doable, and I think Virginia's worked hard to make this happen. The estimated cost to us is about $3,100, which is about the same amount as what the Supervisor Elections was going to charge us for the location at her office. A few more dollars possibly, this is all estimates, we pay actual cost. But I think less than $1,000 difference is what the estimate is, and it would be a lot more convenient. Now that $3,100 is for a one-week period. Obviously, you have the option of doing two weeks, one week or two weeks, and if you go two weeks, it doubles that. But this is a proposal for a one-week period for that. And the dates for early voting, help me out, Virginia, do you know the dates? Uh-oh, I'm asking her.
I didn't write that down, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There's a two-week period that we can hold it in, and it's your option whether you pick the beginning week or the ending week. But by state statute, it has to be within a certain timeframe, 15 days before an election, and end on the second day before the election.
Obviously, all the, the informational material, once all this is adopted and wanted to --
And it will be incumbent on the city to put out a lot of information, because these are changes.
Yes.
We don't want to disenfranchise anyone. Mrs. DeStefano.
Do we have to make, we have, if I understand it correctly, we would have to make a decision now whether we're going to go for one week or two weeks?
Yes.
Yes.
Other council questions?
Do we amend, do we, do we want a motion on this, or?
Well, there is a resolution before us.
Okay.
Right now, we're in council questions and a resolution, and not seeing any. So open the meeting to the public, and for the public, which should be heard on agenda item number seven.
I mean, Clint Freeze. In looking at what we're doing here as far as elections, it would seem to me that you would all want to make it as easy as possible for people to vote. And by, even though you're insisting that consolidating voting booths to, or voting places to only six locations, I think it is important that you give the voter as much opportunity to vote as possible, as easily as possible, and certainly open it up so that you're going to have enough confusion here anyhow. Give them the opportunity to vote, and two weeks, I think, is the minimum you should have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion? Mr. Lewis.
Just one, well, two comments, truly. One, on the length of the voting period from one or, one to two. Because this is a new change for many people, short of looking at costs, I think perhaps we should consider making it two weeks instead of one week, because we have shortened the number of voting places. I know there's an extra cost in that, so that's a consideration we have to take and look at, but there is some merit to extending it.
I think on balance, the reduction in the number of polling places saves significantly more dollars than extending early voting for additional weeks. So we're still responding to the charge that the citizens have given us. Mrs. DeStefano.
I would like to echo that. We should go to two weeks, and I also think that this year we should put out a lot of public notices, the paper, on the website, whatever we can do, the earlier the possible to alert the public.
Mr. Meeker.
And we could probably write it in the sky, and some will still miss it.
Sure.
Nevertheless, I agree with the rest of the council. I think we, by making these other changes that we just previously approved, I think it only makes sense to extend this early voting time period. The cost savings, or the cost actually of $3,100 is, as the mayor said, miniscule compared to what we're saving in the overall big picture with, with the other changes. So I can easily support this motion as well.
Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, just for one, one thing, just to clarify. We've made a lot of changes today. What we did earlier was the six mass vote, voting places. That's not, that's different than.
Yes.
Early voting. I just want to make sure the record is clear.
Early voting will be in one location.
That's what I want to make sure.
It'll be in the open library, but it will be for two-week period.
That's what I want to make sure everyone understood.
And that's the, that's the intent of whatever motion whoever chooses to make.
Right. I'll make it.
Jim, is there anything in the current resolution that says one week?
The resolution basically states that the city manager, you give the city manager the authority to sign a negotiated amendment to the contract for early voting, just early voting, nothing else. And so there aren't any details in the resolution, but if you, it would be nice to put the two week in the motion.
Right.
And then that gives me the direction that we will do two weeks when we work it out with the Supervisor Elections.
I just want to make sure we weren't changing the resolution.
No, no, it's, it's basically because this just came up a week ago, we didn't have the opportunity to actually make those changes, and plus, we just needed direction. But the time is starting to run short, so we need to move forward with the Supervisor Elections.
So the appropriate motion would be to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter an interlocal agreement with the Supervisor of Elections for a two-week early voting period at the Flagler County Public Library in Palm Coast.
Mr. Mayor, I have.
Mr. Mormon.
Question. Now, in that agreement, we had some people that had agreed to move their meeting place from the library to the community center. Now by moving it to two weeks, is that going to further complicate the library's work plan?
There are some standard meetings at the library. What we have offered them is this facility at no cost for anybody that's displaced during, whether it's a one-week or the two-week period. So those that already have reserved space at the library will find space for them at no cost to them. If this isn't available, we'll find some other space for them.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, or second?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number eight, appoint canvassing board member for the 2011 election. Mr. Landon.
This is the last one on, on elections. You are required each election to designate a canvassing board that will be made up of, Virginia, I believe, the Supervisor of Elections, yourself, the city clerk, and then one other person appointed by city council.
Yes.
The ballots are being passed out right now. We're hoping that Mr. Lewis continues to pass out the ballots.
We hope he passes it out on a fan, because I don't have mine with me.
Thank you, I got it, we're good.
Hold it now.
And.
Put yours.
What is quite common is for a city council to nominate one of the council members that are, oh, they actually had names on them this time, so because, see, no matter what we do, Virginia, we can, we just make, we try to make this simpler, but it never gets simple.
Was it different?
Yeah, yours is different, Mary.
Yeah.
Vote early and often.
There you go.
I got two.
Okay, so, one, one member.
No voting twice, right.
We have included all the council members that are not up for reelection, or their seat's not up for reelection, that is eligible. In other words, Mary's on here also because although her seat is, is up for election, she is not eligible to run again because of term limitations. There is one other citizen that council member put on the list, and that's Vivian Richardson. So the four, vote for one, please, and we.
Before you vote, you've got the schedule before you of when the canvassing board meets. Can everybody make those?
And I'd like to remove my name from consideration on this, since it's one of the working stiffs up here. A lot. A lot of these times, I already take off time during the day to handle these functions. I'd prefer not to take off additional time.
And you can remove my name. To make it easier for you.
And I substituted a name, so I'd like to remove my name.
All in favor of Vivian Richardson, mark your ballot appropriately and pass them in. I got my choice. That was easy.
That was easy.
There you go. I think you're going to find this an easy one to tally.
Yeah. I like easy.
Easy's nice. If it's anything other than unanimous.
It's unanimous, Vivian Richardson.
Way to go. May we have a motion to appoint Vivian Richardson to the canvassing board?
I move that we appoint Vivian Richardson to the canvas board.
I second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number nine, this is going to be another easy one.
Yeah.
We need to appoint one applicant to the utility advisory committee, and we have one applicant.
Conveniently, yes.
Do you want a motion?
The tally sheets are named.
Oh, pardon?
The tally sheets are named.
Yeah, it has to be official, I guess.
Oh.
Okay.
We got one person. Virginia keeps us straight.
This way, there's a paper trail.
Killing another tree. Thought we were the green people.
Oh, gosh, only one person, I just don't know who to pick.
I know.
It's tough. Don't look at my ballot.
You can have a write-in.
Yeah, I guess you could. We could have campaign speeches and...
You need help counting these?
One hopes not.
Wait until the next one.
No. I knew we were selling along.
Yeah, then we'll, we'll need help.
All right, here we go. I have made notes on that one.
Check it.
And that's unanimous as well for William Venny for the utility advisory committee.
May I have a motion to appoint William Venny to the utility advisory committee?
I move.
Everybody. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number 10, appoint four applicants to the leisure service advisory committee. Mr. Landon, you want to make any comments on this one?
Yeah, this one is not going to be easy. This one will probably be multiple votes. So, two factors. One of them is, is that three of these are actual up for reappointment, or openings, if you will, meaning that the terms were up for the individuals. One of them, of the opening, is a result of a resignation, which means it's filling a partial term. So, we think the easiest way to do this, to determine who's filling the partial term and who's getting the full term, is that the first round, you only vote for three. I also would like to point out that Sandra Miller is the only incumbent that has asked to be reappointed. Sandra is on the leisure service advisory committee right now. She is, was filling a partial term, so obviously is eligible to be reelected. But if you would only vote for three the first round, then those will be the three full term, and then we will eliminate the three there, and then we'll do a partial term. That way, we know who is partial term and who's full term, and that's always a problem if we do them all at the same time.
So, Regina Hickman did not indicate she underserved?
That is correct. Correct.
Three, please. Will we pass one down? Sorry?
We have five votes for Mary, three votes for Dennis, three votes, sorry, four votes for Sandra, so the three seats will be Mary, Dennis, and Sandra.
Okay.
I have a point and question. Were letters sent out to the, like, for Hickman?
I believe Regina Hickman sent in her resignation.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, now, all we need is...
Now, we need one to fill the unfulfilled term.
So much fun, so much time.
Under round two, if you can mark one person, you'll notice that I have eliminated the three that have already been selected, so you can't vote for one of those three, please.
Early and often.
Just to make things easier.
Yeah, I'm telling you, tough. Yes, my notes.
We have Eleanor received four votes, and Robert won, so it will go to Eleanor Milberg.
May I have a motion to approve Mary Gerallo, Dennis Hurley, Eleanor Milberg, and Sandra Miller to the leisure service advisory committee?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda, items 11 through 18. Would anybody like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Landon wants to remove something.
There we go.
Yeah. Mayor, the LAP agreements, all of them, maybe what, if we could do is have a, have a few comments before you vote on them, from both the attorney and then also just an update that I've been asked to give on our trails, if that's okay with the mayor?
Go right ahead.
Okay, the LAP agreements, which are items, help me out, 12 through...
12, 13, 14, and 15.
15.
Took my glasses off.
Couple of things. One of them is these LAP agreements, LAP stands for...
LAP is local agency project.
Yes. These are the trail grants that we have received from the state. They're primarily federal stimulus dollars. The state is requiring us to amend them for two reasons. If the actual cost of the project comes in under the grant amount, and there's one of them that reduces the grant amount down to the actual cost of the bid, obviously doesn't have an impact on us. Secondly, though, is the new governor has signed an executive order stating that we must abide by the E-Verify is what it's called. It's electronic verification of employment eligibility. It is a system that's throughout the country. It's actually started by the federal government, and it's all electronic, so you can go on to, you know, we go onto our computer, we log into that site, and then we can verify the information for our employees. Contractors are also required to do it. You know, this is all new for us, and so, we have found that there are conflicts in some of the documents the state's providing versus what the federal government's requirements are. Some of them are more stringent than others. This is really no problem for us, it's a pretty easy process. The attorney just wanted you to be aware of the fact that there are some administrative issues with this, that although these documents may specify something today, that this is kind of dynamic as far as how it's implemented. It shouldn't really impact any action that you take, because your action is it just says we have to do it.
We will comply with all federal and state regulations.
Yes, that's what you're asking for. Exactly. What those are right now, we aren't real sure is the, is the problem. I think we understand the regulations, it's implementation. All right, enough of that. Secondly, is I've been asked to give an update on the paths. It's really kind of an interesting process, because as we have been so successful in receiving the grant dollars to develop trails and multipurpose paths in the community, we get quite a few emails from people saying, "What about my neighborhood? Where's my path?" And it's nice to be able to tell them all it's coming, because we still have a number of other projects out there that's been funded by, by the state slash federal government. And I'd like to kind of go through those so that people that are listening can, are aware of where they are. First of all, Bel Air Phase Three will extend the remaining portion of the Bel Air path on the east side of Bel Air all the way down to State Road 100, and then it will continue from State Road 100 south to US 1 on the west side of Bel Air Boulevard. You know, so, the Bel Air Boulevard people, the people that live down in that area will actually be able to come up to State Road 100. We also have the extension of the Rimfire Drive path, or this is more of a sidewalk. It currently terminates at the Rimfire Elementary School. That project will extend the path south to Royal Palms Parkway, go across Royal Palms and then cross the canal and tie into Lehigh Trail, so that that neighborhood will be able to get to Lehigh Trail safely and then get to Lehigh Trail to Bel Air, US 1, et cetera. The next one would be the White View Extension. Currently, we just recently approved the first phase on White View from Ravenwood to Bel Air. The next phase will take it from Ravenwood west to White Mill, up White Mill to Pine Lakes. See, if you, if you know these trails at all, it, what it's doing is connecting them all, so that you will now be able to do loops, et cetera. It will, the White View project also will take the path from Bel Air East to Pine Grove, which allows the people in the P section to get on to the White View path and get connected to all the others. So, that project is also part of these agreements. The ones I just described, all of those are scheduled to happen, get started this year. They're all under design, they're all under contract, ready to go. Another one that we have recently been awarded a contract on is the improvements and extension of the Palm Harbor Path. Palm Harbor has one of the old sidewalks, it has some interesting bridge crossings that are not optimal, et cetera, and it doesn't go all the way up to cover the neighborhoods to the north. We have received a grant from FDOT for the improvements to the Palm Harbor path and extension. We have not experienced this recently, but we went out to bid, bids came in, and they were over budget, primarily because of the pedestrian bridges over canals and some of the wetlands, et cetera. So, FDOT is, has agreed to take a look at other dollars available from projects that have come under bid and to come up with additional dollars. Carl Cody's also working on how we can cut some of the cost out of it and still have it meet our standards, and we're hoping to have that whole process completed in the next 60 days or so, so that we can bring that contract to you. That project is scheduled to start construction either the fourth quarter of this year or first quarter of next year, because these are all design-build. So, when you, we sign the contract, the contractor first has to have it designed, and that's why it takes a little longer than what you're used to. So, those are all the city projects. There are some additional state projects that are really tied into schools and getting kids to schools. That's, the state always contracts with the county for those school projects, and the two that we are most aware of is State Road 100. They have let the contract for improvements to the intersection of Bel Air and State Road 100. You know, the sidewalk's kind of dead in there, and you can't cross this, it's just a, you know, so there's going to be a pedestrian crossing there. The sidewalk that deadens on the west side of the high school will be extended all the way to the beach. That's multi-phases, but the funding is available for a path along State Road 100 all the way to where, I think it's Roberts Road, the new Publix area there is where it terminates, and then also to the west to Benel. So, State Road 100 will have a path along that to have safe walking and bicycling. The other one that is tied into schools and connecting the paths is on Matanzas Wood Parkway. Currently, it deadends at Vert of Paradise, and there's a state grant to extend the path along Matanzas Wood Parkway from the Vert of Paradise west to US 1. You know, where we have the trails, the developer built along US 1, and then that will tie it together. The developer has also agreed to extend the path along US 1 to Palm Coast Parkway at the other end, and then along Palm Coast Parkway, so there now will be that loop from Bel Air, Palm Coast Parkway, US 1, Matanzas Woods. And then, there's a Shell Trail halfway in between, so that, that whole area. So, we have a number of trails and paths, all being funded by state and federal dollars, primarily, there are some, a couple of those are some local match, and get a lot of questions, a lot of compliments. Everybody is noticing the ability to get along, get around with bicycles and your feet versus always getting in the car, and it's very exciting, I think. I'd be happy to try answering questions.
Question.
Mr. Lewis? Maybe I missed it on the Pine Lakes Parkway to US 1. There's no, there's no sidewalk there at all. So, and then on US 1, you said they're going to extend the sidewalk to Palm Coast Parkway. So, I must have missed something in there.
The, okay, the US 1 path terminates before it gets to Palm Coast Parkway, it's north of it. Yeah, so it'd be extending it south to Palm Coast Parkway, and then there is not a path along Palm Coast Parkway all the way to US 1. It kind of terminates there at the church. So, we will, and that's what the developers agreed to do, is connect those paths, so there'd be long Palm Coast Parkway and US 1.
Okay.
Now, you said Pine Lakes.
Well, it's, it's on the Parkway, it's Palm Coast Parkway, but, but it starts from Pine Lakes.
Okay, yes.
Pine Lakes doesn't hate to listen.
The other one, though, you bring up is, is Pine Lakes North. Pine Lakes North is basically that link north of Palm Coast Parkway that curves around and ties into Bel Air.
Right.
That is actually on your agenda also for design. That is a city project, not funded by state and federal. That is the, basically, the extension of what we did on Pine Lakes Parkway, south of Palm Coast Parkway, where we widened the street, gave it some shoulders, left turn lanes, and putting the path along Pine Lakes Parkway. That, that one is also, if you approve the consent agenda, that's an item on... That one is also, if you approve the consent agenda, that's an item on the consent agenda to move forward with the design of that project. So that is another trail. It's not in the same category as the others because it's a city project. It's really kind of a street improvement project in that area.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Landon. I received an email referenced the bridge on Beltair by Buddy Taylor, where it would have to be closed because it was not built to specifications. Can you address that?
Yes, it's, you know, when we, our engineer record came out and did the final inspection, he found some deficiencies in the construction compared to the plans. And those deficiencies reduce the weight load that the boardwalk can handle. And was the engineer put in writing to us that he was concerned that if we had a large number of people, in this case, because it's right next to the school, real concern is kids congregating on it, that it may not hold the weight. Obviously, when you have an engineer say that you might have something very bad happen, we had no choice but to close it down and tell the contractor, this is a contractor's responsibility, either fixes it to meet the engineer's specification, or, well, I mean, they're going to have to fix it, there's different options for them how to do that. But right now, they are trying to come up with a solution from a design standpoint.
We don't want another Tacoma Narrows Bridge.
Yes. So, you know, once your engineer tells you that there's potential for collapsing, if there's too many people on it, you know, that's an easy decision, and we just told them they had to shut it down. You know, you could probably walk over forever, you know, walking, riding your bicycle, wouldn't have been a problem. But that close to the school, you get too many kids in one place jumping up and down, and, you know, he said it may not hold up, so. They're going to have to fix it, at their cost, that's their responsibility to meet the engineer's specifications.
Is there a timeframe on that?
We just heard about it Friday, and so right now, they're scrambling to figure out how, what the design, what the fix is to it. So, no, we don't have a timeframe now, although obviously, having it shut down is not, is bad news, and so urgent, we're trying to put some urgency behind it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Speaker. Jim, the bridge over Royal Palms that you were talking about, the crossing is going to go into the Cypress Knolls section, I guess, would connect up into that area?
Well, it doesn't actually go into Cypress Knolls, it goes to Lehigh Trail.
Oh, it does, all right. It's close to them, okay. Is that a, like, no piers in the water or anything like that? It's going to be upland to upland spanning all the way across?
It's going to look almost identical to the one that we crossed, the same waterway at Beltair.
Great, so it's, yeah, pre-stressed and all that, okay. What type of cost overages were you seeing on Palm Harbor roughly?
Carl, can you help me out with that question?
The reason I ask this has been one of my favorite ones for about the last couple of years, so.
The bids came in, we had one deduct alternate in the bid, we knew the project wasn't fully funded by DOT to begin with, they allowed us to put in a deduct alternate for the quarter, landscape quarter of publication. With the deduct alternate, I want to say we were just about, I think it was about $800,000 over budget. And the main issue was the pedestrian bridges, there's two large bridges, and once they hit a certain span, they go up exponentially in price. So that's where the cost overcame from.
All right, when you're saying the magic words deduct, does that mean that this will not have a similar cross-section like the Pine Lakes walkway has? Will there not be benches and landscaping-seeing areas, exercise facilities, whatever? What's being included, what's in the plan?
Basically, it'll be the path and the bridges, and there'll be no bench bumpouts or landscaping at this time. I'm coming, you know, direction to get the path in place, and then it'll accommodate for future benches that could be added in.
Is there a subsequent plan in the works for the remainder of it, since we've been talking about the landscaping and the benches and the?
Yeah, the, the project was, was put out to bid at our standard design, and that is a 12-foot path, or is this one 10? They're either 10 or 12.
This one is a 10-foot asphalt path.
10-foot asphalt path. And it has the benches with the landscaping and the trash cans periodically. That's our, that's our standard of today. What Carl is referring to is when you go over bid, you start trying to look at ways of cutting those costs to get it within the budget. And obviously, the benches and the landscaping is one of the first things to go. That decision ultimately would be up to city council. So then, if those are eliminated, then during future budgets, it wouldn't, the state won't fund the landscaping separate and the benches, that would be a matter of enhancement, if it's cut out at this time. But this is what happens when you have those difficult cost decisions coming your way. That's, I want, I want to stress, that is not on your agenda today, and that's why Carl is not really prepared to.
We are seeking other ways of cost-saving measures on the project. We haven't finalized them yet, or the process. We're currently working with DOT for additional funding, and we're in that process right now to see what, how much money we're really short.
Well, obviously, I'm a little disappointed to hear that the amenities that were provided earlier on some of the other walkways will not be provided over, within that district. And I'm looking forward to you finding ways to save some money in somewhere, some other project to return those amenities to that bike path, or to that path.
Are there any other council questions or comments?
On the consent agenda items or other agenda items?
This is consent agenda. Even though we technically did not remove anything from the consent agenda, because of all this discussion, I will entertain public comment on the, any of the consent agenda items if you so wish. If anyone wishes to comment on any of the consent agenda items, this is your opportunity.
I simply have a couple of questions. Mr. Landon, if you can share with me the number of actual calls you've got, both pro and con, on these paths. You said you've got lots of calls coming.
We'll answer all your questions at the end.
Okay. And secondly, how much of Palm Coast money is actually being used as matching funds for these projects? So I can take this back to my boards, I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Mr. Landon, how many calls have you received, pro and con, on trails, and what is the total city match on these projects?
I would say most of the correspondence comes in the form of email, and I don't have a number.
Give us a sense.
Dozens, I think would be fair, a couple dozen, which is a large number for one, one type of project. And once again.
Can you characterize the tone of the messages?
The tone of the message usually is, "How come I don't have one in my neighborhood?"
Yeah, "I love it, why don't I have one?"
Yes. The other, only negative side that I've heard is, "Why do we need two on both sides, or why do we need a path on both sides of Beltair?" And that is a very easy answer, and that is because of the schools and the parks and the swimming pool on the east side of Beltair, and that you have a lot of kids that had to cross the street twice to get over to the sidewalk out of the neighborhoods, basically primarily the P section, with a, without a signal, without light, walk up the path to get to the school, then cross again at the light. And so it's a safety factor. Plus, if you get further south on Beltair, you see where we have a lot of starts and stops as you start getting into the commercial area, you have pathways that go to nowhere. And, and then it's actually part of the overall master plan, where when you get on Beltair north of Palm Coast Parkway, you have the sidewalks on both sides as part of the new Palm, Beltair north project. So this was, you know, all part of a trail, path, sidewalk, master plan. And so that's the only negative comments that I've, I've heard, but they are way outweighed by the people who want to know, when is it going to come to their neighborhood?
In the second half of the question, what is the city match on these projects?
I, and I can almost tell you, we have some, some of the projects are paid 100% by grant. A lot of these on here are 100% grant, others are match, and we can get that information to you, but don't have that right now.
Well, I'd appreciate if you could get the information to the questioner, and also, if it's city match, what was the source of those dollars? General fund, impact fees, so on and so forth?
They're out of our capital improvement fund, is, correct, okay, I'm getting the right nods, which is the dollars from your property tax.
Okay.
That go into capital.
We're back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Moving second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion meeting. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, please approach the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good morning, Your Honor, Council. Could we have an update on the proposed city hall project, where it stands and what the future plans are? Thank you, sir.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. I guess I probably, maybe should have brought this up on the consent, but I remain concerned about that bicycle path from Rimfire connecting to the Lehigh Trail. I just need to remind everybody that's a four-lane road, including the north turn onto Rimfire and another one. And I can tell you from experience that crossing Beltair even with a light is a challenge for a bike rider. I can also tell you that crossing Old King's Road at Town Center Boulevard, those two lanes to continue on the Lehigh Trail is a challenge. So I'm real concerned that just slowing traffic down in lieu of perhaps a traffic signal is a major concern that I have on, on that bike path crossing Royal Palm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Marion Petrucci. I am leader of the Neighborhood Watch Group of the R section in Palm Coast. I would like to highlight on some of the items mentioned in the emails sent to the council last week. There continues to be a constant parade of individuals trespassing to and from Ralph Carter Park via private property on Richardson Drive. Trespassers are of all ages. These individuals loiter on our street, throw trash on our lawn, steal from our garages and mailboxes, and destroy our personal property. The events listed here are factual, however, after each of my presentations to the council, these facts are downplayed and discredited. We residents live on Richardson Drive and observe all events firsthand. Many residents have accompanied me to meetings for verification and support. Our question is, why does there continue to be opposition to the simple solution of erecting a high wrought iron fence around Ralph Carter Park to alleviate the problems in our neighborhood? It is very disturbing to live in an area of Palm Coast where residents continue to have their property violated, and nothing will be done to stop this by the powers that be. The park draws undesirables from all over, fathers and husbands, and no longer permit their daughters and wives to walk the street alone. The bottom line and consensus of all residents is, the city created the problem, the city needs to fix the problem. All trespassers need to be forced to use the main planned entrance on Rimfire Drive to access Ralph Carter Park. A fence around the park will enforce this. This past Sunday afternoon, deputies were on the scene for the following. One, a group of eight individuals leaving the park through a rock through the front glass door of a resident's home. These individuals were not from our neighborhood and were witness, seen fleeing and laughing. Two, seven individuals left the park and were loitering in the middle of the street using foul language. One of the individuals urinated in plain sight in swale. The week before last, deputies were on the scene for the following. One, two bikes were stolen from a resident's garage. Two, a resident witnessed individual stealing fruit from his tree. The resident chased individuals off his property. They laughed and ran back into the park. Three, a possibly stolen bike was left on one of the vacant lots for three days. On the third day, an unknown individual moved the bike and left it lying in the swale. Deputies confiscated the bike. A group of individuals exiting the park formed a barricade to block the street. A resident driver not able to pass was forced to follow behind the group until he reached his home. Individuals laughed at the senior driver. Every morning and afternoon, youngsters entered the wooded lots, traveled through the park, then to school. A fence would stop this dangerous practice. There is a deep concern here. This is the same property on which older individuals loiter, leave beer cans, a mattress, and use condoms. The horrible possibilities are endless. Also, we residents repeatedly witnessed the park lights lit until 10:00 PM. This encourages individuals to trespass and loiter on our street on their way to the park. Thank you for your time concerning this, Matt.
Thank you.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Hate to bring this up again, but on the stormwater system, you're telling me that, last, at the last meeting, you said that you're going to hold on to the eight dollars per month. If you're going to decrease the big people to 95%, you're going to give them a 95% credit, and you're losing $70,000 because of whatever, whatever it is. Can you tell me just where you're going, how, you're going to maintain 80, eight dollars a month with this added expenses that you have now, and we're still paying eight dollars a month? Or is this going to be, okay, eight bucks a month until the next budget? And then the next budget comes out, and then you're going to come up with the $10? I would like to know just how you're going to figure, are keeping 45 or whatever, $4 million without raising our fees?
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Come back to council, but first, Mr. Landon, update on the city hall issue.
City council asks staff to provide more detailed information regarding the project when you received a great deal of feedback from the community. The kind of detail that the community was asking for, and city council was asking for, requires you to get into the professional design and construction management kind of question as far as actual costs, not just for cost of construction, but also operations. So what we are in the process of doing is going through the selection process for an architect and a construction management firm. Part of the, those contracts will include a initial stage that will help answer city council and the community's questions at little or no cost, with no obligation to proceed with the project. But in order to receive those services, there has to be some assurance to those firms selected that if the project moves forward, and I understand that's a big if right now, that they would be the firm that would get the design work or construction management work. And I know that the last stage of that project is, or that selection process for construction management is going through right now, and should be ready to come to city council for your consideration in 30 to 60 days.
Other than staff time in this selection process, we have incurred no costs?
That's.
We have obligated no monies?
That's correct.
Okay. The concerns about the path on Rimfire to Lehigh Trail and the crossing of busy streets?
Yes, when the, first of all, I Yes, when the, first of all, I do not anticipate, based on warrants, what my traffic engineers are talking about is that we do not anticipate a signal going up at that location. Secondly, is we are in agreement that with a pedestrian crossing at that area, that there are some improvements that have to happen, not just put some paint on the street, but we're talking about other improvements, places that potentially they can stand as a, in the median, et cetera. So, don't know the final design, but that is part of the design, is that crossing and making it as safe as possible. I can also tell you that the engineers have agreed that the speed has to be reduced when this happens. It's currently 55, which is too high for that area. And so, when this goes in, that will be part of it. So, the whole safe, safety issue of that crossing is all part of the design they're working on right now.
The ongoing Ralph Carter, Richardson Drive issue?
Well, you know, and Captain Carmen called me yesterday to let me know that he is off today, Lieutenant, and I'm going to forget your name, Lieutenant, but is here if you'd like to hear from him. But all of the things you described here is a law enforcement issue, and the Sheriff's Department, in talking to Captain Carmen, believes that there's been, in fact, we've seen the evidence where there's been a lot of emphasis and a lot of work in this area. Obviously, we have some people who don't think it's enough, and so, they've talked about trying to meet with the neighbors. I understand that's been a challenge also, to address how the sheriff's presence can be even greater in that neighborhood if we're having these type of problems. The type of problems we're talking about, we know from our experience, and it's not trying to mean anybody's suggestion, but we know from our experience that fence, a fence is not going to solve the problem that they're talking about. And the fence would be, have to go around the whole park and be extremely expensive and not solve a problem. The problem that we're talking about is, if it's in the neighborhood, you hear that, well, the kids are not from the neighborhood, most of them are from that neighborhood. We, in talking to the Sheriff's Department. The lieutenants here are prepared to address this even further, but it's really something the Sheriff's Department has got to work with the neighborhoods to combat the issues with the kids if they're terrorizing the residents.
I'd like to call to question the comment that we know from our experience that fences don't solve the problem. I'd like a little more information on that. That is counterintuitive to me.
Well...
There are fences, and there are fences.
Sure, you could build a very high wall that they couldn't climb, but you're talking very, very high cost. You know, a wall that they can't climb, the distance we're talking about is, I mean, I could throw out a high number, but it's, it would be very, very expensive.
Well...
And Mayor, I can, I can tell you that we've offered other solutions. You know, the trespassing part of it, the best solution for that is to have a designated walkway area, and there is a city easement, and we've, what the neighborhood says, no, they don't want that designated walkway. But that would, you know, people are likely to funnel in that one least resistant, in other words, if you have a path. So, we have tried very hard to accommodate this. The other thing we've offered, you know, that is, also addresses the fact that some of the property owners have told us they don't want a fence, is if you want to spend money on a fence, in my opinion, the best thing to do would be to give a grant program, if you will, and have individuals build a fence for their property. If you want to spend city dollars on that, then you can do the grant, and then individuals can have the type of fence they want if they want a fence. So, we've thrown that option out there, but that is, you know, has not been received well either, so. No, it's a bit, a lot of discussion, and someone that just wants a fence around the whole perimeter, you know, I think, least direction I've gotten all along, is that that is not going to solve the issue that the neighborhood's talking about. There are other ways to try to solve the issue. It's a matter of working with the neighbors to make that happen.
We'll come back to this one.
Okay.
The last question, Mr. Carroll's question about stormwater, I think I can answer that one, Jack. There is no such thing as a free lunch. By extending the discounts that we've extended, the anticipated decrease in revenues is not $70,000, it's $700,000. We've received, council has received from Mr. Adams, a variety, a menu, if you will, of options whereby you could make up that $700,000 shortfall. And in each and every case, it's a question of cutting some portion of service, either cutting out one of the two swale crews, in other words, reducing the extent of swale rehabilitation that you can do in any given year, to deferring the replacement of pipes and culverts, and simply wait until they collapse and then do them on an as-needed basis. We have a whole list of options. Clearly, one option is to reduce the level of service. The other option, clearly, is to increase the stormwater fee. The third option that comes to my mind is subsidize stormwater from the general fund, make it partially funded through taxpayer dollars. Beyond that, I'm not aware of any easy options. Those are the three that come to mind. If council has any other thoughts, and we have yet to address this, we are going to, and I've asked Mr. Landen to make this the number one item on our budget discussions this year, because it clearly is going to have the greatest impact on the greatest number of people. Council have any comments on the questions that were raised by the public? Mrs. DeStefano?
I want to go back to the issue of Ralph Carter Park. As a citizen, but also as a council person, I'm distressed to hear that we've, this is an ongoing issue, and if I were in the neighborhood, I would be extremely upset. One of the suggestions I made several months ago, and I don't think it's been followed through, was identify that entire neighborhood and prepare a letter, certified mail receipt requested, advising every resident in that geographic area of the issues that are occurring, and ask the homeowner for their support in eliminating the issue. This is no different than in the schools, when the schools ask the parents to help on an issue. I don't know if it would help, but I really think that's one of the areas to attack. We need to do something to help. I would be very, very stressful with that, to put up with that. When I first moved here 19 years ago, we had renters in the back, and they came through our yard, and they broke the mailbox several times. And it took me about nine months to get that issue addressed. We were not a city at that time. But I think we, as a city, everybody deserves the right to have a quiet neighborhood. And if we can't resolve today, I would like to make this a number one item on a workshop with staff giving us some options. One would definitely be some letter going out to the neighbors. Number two, if a fence were constructed, I don't see how a fence is going to help, because the kids are going to crawl that fence. I don't care if it's 10-foot. They're going to figure out how to get over that. But let's look at options at a workshop, and let's, this time, really go forward. We need to help these people.
Mr. Meeker.
I think, I look at the issue about the fence, I suppose, a little bit differently. If it's a, certainly if it's the type of fence that we have over behind or adjacent to Indian Trail Sports Complex, anytime a kid launches a soccer ball over it, at 56, I can hop that fence and go get it. Now, it might be a little bit more difficult coming back across, but if I'm going downhill, I can get it. So, if you're going to stop kids from coming into the park, and you're going to do it with a fence, it has, it's going to have to be a substantial kind of fence. The only other option that I can think of is you've got a drainage ditch running along the backside of the park, and if you were protecting your castle, you would dig a moat. So, you could, you either dig something deep enough and wide enough that makes it difficult to get across, or you come back and put up something higher, or the law enforcement actions have to be stepped up to a higher level of control out there. I'm not sure what options are available, other than one relies on the Sheriff's Department and his budget to make it happen, and the other relies on our general fund to make it happen. Now, would we be able to just pull something magically out of the general fund budget this year to build a fence? I don't think so. Could we look at it as the goals and objectives and try to get something in there for a substantial kind of fence for next year? Probably so, you know, if that's the way the council wants to go. But if you provide a challenge for somebody to overcome, whether it's eight feet, or five feet, or 10 feet, some are going to rise to that challenge to go over it, unless we're going to do it in a similar fashion as Rayford, with razor wire across the top or something.
Have you seen the program Wipeout?
Yeah.
Maybe, Mr. Landen, we in the past have used various consulting firms on park projects. The one that comes to mind, and I'm not pushing a consultant, is Bellamore Herbert. But there are people who do park design for a living. Maybe they have some thoughts as to what we can do. I think we do need to look into this.
I have a comment, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis?
Yes. I have to echo Marion Frank's attitude with respect to the fence. A fence can do two things. One, it keeps people out, and also, it keeps people in. So, putting up a fence could be an answer, but I don't think that's the right answer. Again, you have to worry about the fact that you're talking about kids. Kids, they are very adventurous. They can do almost anything. I think they can almost fly. But I don't think the fence is the answer. One thing I suggested, it's a long time ago about that park, was to have the Sheriff's Department assign one of their COP vehicles to that park, just to be, show a presence, so that when there is that sort of action going on, at least we have some legal or official representation and eyes looking at that particular area. We, you know, we spent a lot of money putting in cameras, and I haven't heard anyone say that the cameras are working or not working, or haven't seen anything, or that sort of thing. So, I'm saying to myself, what was the sense of putting in the cameras to stop some of this stuff? We get a lot of comments about, from the residents, but I need to know more about what are the things that we've done? Are they working or not working? And then I need to know also, why can't we assign a COP to that area, C-O-P, to that area, as perhaps a method of deterring those kind of things? But I think the fence idea is not the, not the proper one.
Other comments from council? Just for point for clarification, Mr. Ball.
You know, I believe in the fence, I don't believe in the fence, but I have seen fence put up, but kids have a way of finding spray paint. And you put a fence up, unless it is a porous type of fence, iron rail or something like that, if it's a wall, a solid wall, you're going to have graffiti all over that wall. They're going to have, if it's gang emblems or whatever, any kind of fence you put up is going to end up an ugly mess by the time the kids get through with it. I don't know what the answer is. Mr. Landen, I'm not sure if you said you had attempted to have a meeting with the Neighborhood Watch Group? Have you asked all the neighbors to meet you at Rimfire or somewhere? Just bring everybody in there to talk to you at the school?
I have personally had a neighborhood meeting at the park about the issue. You know, I think it's important to realize that there are a lot of resources going into this, and the idea that we are ignoring it is just false. Once again, it's primarily going to be law enforcement, you know, Neighborhood Watch-type groups organizing the neighborhoods with the Sheriff's Department, and figuring out how to not just react, but get proactive in preventing the behavior versus just reacting to the behavior after it occurs. And that is critical, but that takes the Sheriff's Department in conjunction with the neighbors, and that's exactly what they've been trying to work on, and have had quite a few successes. And we'd be happy to have Captain Carmen come tell you about all the efforts they've made and the successes. You know, the cameras, we've seen the calls be reduced in that area. We have that data. There's a lot of positive things that have been going on as a result of the efforts. So, I don't want city council to think that nothing as positive is happening, because it is. And we will continue, we have to continue. This isn't a, you know, one-time fix. So, Mr. Mormon, yeah, we will continue to try to meet on a regular basis with the neighbors to organize the efforts. And as I said, I've talked to Captain Carmen, and the idea of increasing those efforts once again, they're willing to do that.
I know, something has to be done, because I know I would not want to live under that...
We agree.
...environment. And something, you know, like I said, we built the park, we in essence have created the problem. Well, the problem would be somewhere else. The park just happened to be an attraction. But I really think we have some responsibility to do everything that we possibly can.
Mr. Meeker.
My general problem with this whole thing is that we're placing the responsibility on everybody except who should actually be responsible, which is the, a lack of parenting and guidance to these kids that are not being taught that trespassing is a bad thing, or urinating in the swale in front of people is not a bad thing, or any of these other things is not a bad thing. And I don't think that the role of government can accomplish or can do that kind of training. If I put a, and by the way, I think a fence can have a, an impact on reducing the sum of the numbers, or a significant portion even, of the numbers of running back and forth between the park and committing some of these deeds. The question is, what type of fence? If I, if I go chain link and I go 10 feet high with a barbed wire wrap around the top, I'm not going to have my graffiti, but I'm going to have my bolt cutters, and as an innovative kid, I'm going to come in there, I'm going to cut a slit in, and I'm going to have my escape thing before I commit something. If I do concrete block, I'm going to have my graffiti, you know, and if I cap it with something else, I'm going to have problems there. I could do a, and I always liked this idea, if the sun is right, I like vegetated walls of blackberry and stuff like that, just because, make it a little bit more difficult to, you know, get through something in a thorny area. Sometimes you're going to avoid it that way. There's options that we could do...
Have you ever been through the beech plum cactus?
There you go. But the bottom line is, nothing that I put up, I think, in the long term is undefeatable. And I'd hate to spend a ton of money and still fail, and that's what concerns me. I don't want, if I'm going to spend the money, I don't want to fail. I still like the effort of the, of the cameras, and I like the effort of the Sheriff's Department. If this is a crime and a hooliganism issue, which is what it sounds like to me, that falls on the shoulders of the Sheriff's Department. On the other hand, if I could assist the Sheriff's Department in removing some of the hooliganism in this area, and do it with portable cameras that are interspersed and placed randomly throughout the neighborhoods, so that we can provide the Sheriff's Department with visual evidence of these things going on, and pictures that can be taken into school to round up these kids, and they find out that they're being monitored in this area, and that that, that type of behavior... and that that, that type of behavior is not gonna be accepted, then I might accomplish something, but I'm, I'm just not, as much as I like a fence, I'm just not convinced I can build anything out there that can't be defeated.
One more suggestion, Mr. Landon. We might wanna chat with the neighbors who are adjacent to Holland Park. You have a very similar circumstance. You have a lodge park, Holland Park, and going up the northwest.
North.
North side of the park, you've got residential neighborhood that homes back directly up onto the park. I'm trying to remember what kind of barricades. As I recall, the individual neighbors have put up a stockade fence, or this, or that, or the other. But we might wanna, and there is one path that cuts through from the residential street into the, the north side of Holland Park. We might wanna just go chat with those neighbors, what their experiences have been, what has worked for them.
The other thing about Holland Park, though, it's a, it's a mature park in a mature area for the most part. This is, you know, this area that we're talking about is new park.
Yeah.
Rapidly developed with younger families and stuff like that. It was one of our big growth areas for quite a while.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. DiStefano.
I'm sorry, but my suggestion six months ago and today has just fallen on deaf ears, and I'd like to know the reason why council was not taking up on the idea of sending a letter to all the residents in that geographic area. I mean, it is an attempt, it's a low-cost item, asking the citizens in those homes to help with this policing. I just, both parents are working, they may not be aware of what damage is being done, and I think it's worthwhile to try.
When the Sheriff's Department shows up at six o'clock with Little Jimmy by the ear, and video photographs of what Little Jimmy has been doing, I would hope that any active parent would step in and correct it.
That's reaction, not proaction.
Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna beat a dead horse to death. I'm involved with the mentoring program there at the high school, so I'm also involved with the Flagler Focus on Youth. A lot of these kids are not children of parents in the house. A lot of my grandkids that have been given the parents trouble somewhere else, and now they've been shipped down here to Palm Coast, to the grandparents, who have absolutely no control over the kids. The kids run the household. They go when they want to, they come when they want to, they do what they want to, and examples we've seen is they tell the grandparents, even tell the parents, shut up, mind your own business, you don't tell me what to do. And some of these parents are living in fear of the kids. So, Mary, I have nothing against sending a letter out to the parents of these kids, but a lot of times, it falls on deaf ears. The parents don't control the kids, the kids control the household, and that is the problem. How are we gonna get a handle on that? We say parenting is the answer to the problem, absolutely, but there is no parenting going on in this way and everything. And I just don't know how you're gonna do it. So, keep that in mind, that talking to the parents is doing just that, talking to the parents. The message just may not get through to the kids, because the parents either don't care, are afraid of the kids, or just have thrown their hands up in the air and given up.
That's the end of public participation. In case you haven't already exhausted yourselves, discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Mormon, I'll start.
Mr. Landon, Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three grant agreement, where are we on that? That's the one from HUD?
Yes. Just got word that we were selected, and so then they're working on all the details. Now, be coming to City Council for your approval sometime soon. I don't have the exact date, but it was just, it was either yesterday or last week that we got the notice that we were approved.
That's the seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in that area?
No, I thought it, we were a couple million.
Couple million?
One point four million.
Okay.
Just as a reminder on that issue, March twenty-sixth, the Board of Realtors is having a seminar, a symposium, a get-together at the Board of Realtors to talk about a variety of real estate issues. I'm gonna be representing the city, kinda giving an overview of the NSP program. So, anybody who's listening to this meeting, if you have interest in the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, either as a means of purchasing a home or renting a home, that might be a great meeting to go to, and you get a, one more chance at the, at the overview information. And one of our staff will be there with me if there are technical questions that I can't answer.
What time, Mr. Bennett?
Uh, good question. Ten AM, according to my calendar, which sometimes is right and sometimes is wrong. But certainly, if you have questions, if anybody is interested, call the Board of Realtors, and I'm sure they've got, for sure, the correct time. Mr. Mormon, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
I have nothing, sir.
Mrs. DiStefano.
Yes, I understand that Friday will reconvene for the economic development.
Saturday?
Friday.
Friday? Is it Friday?
Friday, mhm.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, how time, Saturday you're gonna be in a parade.
Friday, the eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Right.
Saturday, you're in a parade.
Correct.
Could you advise us as to how long that's gonna last? I have eight AM, but do we have a conclusion?
I've been till eight AM to five PM.
All day.
All day.
All right, that's wonderful. And I'd like to advise the people here, and as well those that are listening, Flagler County, transportation has been one of my, trying to get transportation for our people, and I, I saw this came out, I guess, a week or two ago, and you can pick it up, but it's Flagler Transportation is advising the public that there is transportation available, and just call at three-eight-six, three-one-three, four-one-zero-zero. And according to this, they'll take you to medical appointments, employment, social services, education, daycare, nutrition programs, and quality of life trips. So, hopefully, if you do call, you'll be able to get transportation. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Meeker.
Just asking, Mr. Landon, will we, these new trails that we were talking about today, since they will be constructed and we'll be updating our GIS mapping systems, would you be sure to forward that information over to the counties, so they can include it in their next update on the, on the trails maps? And the other thing was, when it comes to council discussion this year, since we decided that we don't think it's a great idea, going back to the fences thing, to build a fence around the whole thing, I wouldn't mind coming back and revisiting the issue about a cost-sharing grant for individual property owners in that area, if the property owners believe that a fence across the back of their properties is the way to go. I'd hate to get into that as a, as a policy issue throughout the city of Palm Coast, of course, but maybe because of the high level of this, of activity that's going on out there, we may wanna come back and revisit that. It's not something that's budgeted for this year, so it's, it'd be, have to be something that we would set up for the following, but at least raise it, you know, for discussion in our goals and objectives for this coming year. That's it.
Okay. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to make sure all of you are aware of the ongoing efforts locally and statewide, and actually now some federal regarding the pill mills. This has come up before here, and I know that you are very well aware that there's been a lot of discussion in Tallahassee about efforts, what should be done, what, what makes sense. So, I just wanna make sure that, that, we've been following it, staff, and of course, our office has been following, and not just for the city of Palm Coast, but for a lot of the municipalities we work with. So, just, just a couple things. One, at the state level, the Drug Enforcement Administration has launched a pill mill tip line. They are doing some undercover efforts for enforcement of the existing state laws, and I've been advised that that is helping, primarily in South and Central Florida. There is a lot of disputes over the database, the statewide database that has been enacted in over thirty other states throughout the country. Florida has enacted it in two thousand and nine, but it has not been implemented. First, there was an issue over a bid dispute, and the current governor has chosen not, not to move it, move it forward, although there is a recent effort by the state Attorney General to move it forward. She has come to the conclusion that it would be beneficial for enforcement on a statewide basis. And the last thing I wanna report is that there is a bill pending in the United States House of Representatives called the Pill Mill Crackdown Act of two thousand and eleven, which would get some federal laws on the books as well. So, locally, a lot of the counties and the cities are watching to see what happens, to determine whether they want to get into land use regulations of these zoning, conditional uses of these types of uses, or do they want to get into the business of actually regulating these types of uses, given that there are already state laws on the books, and the difficulty of enforcement, and the costs of enforcement associated with, with actually getting into regulatory legislation. So, I just wanna make sure all of you are aware of what's going on. We're monitoring, we're trying to stay on top of it to make sure that the problem doesn't get any worse. I'm aware that there were some enforcement efforts in Volusia County that trickled over into Flagler County and tried to stop a problem rising out of Volusia County. But that's, that was my report, Mr. Mayor.
I have one question for you. On a similar issue, the prevalence, the increasing prevalence of these so-called internet cafes, Seminole County has placed a moratorium on them. Are you, are you aware of any efforts on the part of the state to address this issue? It seems to me that what we've created is a discriminatory situation. We're taxing the heck out of the Seminoles for their gambling establishments, but these entities go unregulated and untaxed by our state. The state found a, a deep pocket in the red light cameras, I'm wondering if maybe they see something here.
They found us, that's the point.
There actually has, have been some bills that have brought forward in Tallahassee to, to create online poker. That has not passed yet, but that is being proposed, and that would be associated with the existing paramutual facilities. You'd be able to go to these facilities, the existing paramutual facilities, and log on to computers and do online gambling there through, through the poker. Internet cafes proliferate because even though slot machines are considered illegal gambling in the state of Florida, there are exceptions currently existing in the state statutes. It's one of them's called the Chuck E. Cheese exception, and so what happens is the establishments argue when enforcement is brought, that they fall within one of these exceptions. Local governments are taking different approaches. One, there are moratoriums. Two is land use. I know that many jurisdictions are placing in locations or zoning them into locations which may not be as palatable or profitable, if you will, for these locations, industrial, heavy, have heavy industrial, that sort of thing, some jurisdictions do that. You mentioned Seminole County. Seminole County passed a law, passed an ordinance recently, and basically outlawing internet cafes as was defined in that ordinance, and they promptly got sued. And there was an order that was entered, entering a temporary injunction from further enforcement of that ordinance. So, that lawsuit is ongoing in Seminole County. And I know that a lot of the local governments that I work with and know of from other attorneys that do this, they're watching very closely that lawsuit, 'cause that is gonna be very instructive for, for, for all of us, to find out exactly how that's gonna turn out in the court systems. But that one, in my opinion, is, is very difficult for local governments to deal with. The state of Florida is not, I have not heard of anything, the state of Florida is gonna do anything on a statewide basis, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Meeker. There's two interesting issues that were brought up there. One was the discussion about a moratorium on new facilities, and the second was a zoning issue, I, you know, on new facilities, I guess, as well. We've dealt, we've dealt with something similar to the zoning issues when it came to
Adult entertainment.
Adult entertainment, and moving it out in certain areas of the, of the city, although we may wanna start rethinking that zoning with ten square miles now added west. It almost puts it right in the center, so we may wanna think about that one. But while the Seminole County lawsuit is going on, would it be appropriate to seek a moratorium on new facilities until the Seminole County process has been totally vetted through the courts?
I believe we have. Have we not done an ordinance for a moratorium? No, we talked about it, and we chose not to.
Before we enact any ordinance like that, I'd like to ask the Sheriff's Department, not today, but if you could get back to us with your perceptions of these locations, are there problems associated with them, or are they simply innocuous? I mean, if, if you choose to go in and put your twenty dollars in a, on a card and play a game and win or lose, that's gambling, but if you choose to do that, that's certainly not my concern. But if there are law enforcement issues, loitering, burglaries, robberies, anything of that nature, I'd like to hear about it. Give us a better sense if, if we have a problem that needs addressing, or whether we're just trying to stick government into more and more of our citizens' lives.
And we did talk, and I apologize, we did talk about these internet cafes at a workshop. It's been several months now, and I do not believe that you gave us any direction as far as further, further action.
But if the sheriff would get back to us with, you know, just a curbside opinion of, is this an issue worth discussing, or are we, okay. Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Couple of really positive things. First of all, we, obviously, I think everybody knows that Red Lobster and Olive Garden is open. I've decided to call it Red Olive. Had a great grand opening last week, and had a birthday in my family, and ended up Red Lobster for a birthday dinner last night, and it is amazing, the crowds, we knew that was gonna happen.
How long did you wait?
We probably waited the range of about forty minutes. So, good for business, bad on the nerves, but no, it was, it was very enjoyable, too. So, good, good news. Also, a lot of buzz in the community, the retail community in particular, about the retailers are getting back in the game. We are not very often visited by retailers until they've made decisions to, to move into a community, and we know of a good half a dozen or more that are in town, looking at Palm Coast, looking for expansion. They're moving very cautiously, they're, they're very cautious about starting their capital, gear up for their capital programs again, but I can tell you that there appears to be good news on the horizon when it comes to some of the national retailers coming to Palm Coast, in addition to Red Lobster and Olive Garden. We also have a week off next week. You all have a week off. This is one of those months with five Tuesdays, so you, yeah, I know.
Aren't some of us spoken for?
I was gonna say, some of, some of us don't get that week off like that.
Yeah, okay, we've, we've tried to put you to work, don't want you to get out of practice or anything. Two weeks from now will be the workshop, and prior to the workshop, at eight AM, we're doing a little rededication, a reopening of the dog park and Holland Park. That was reopened this Sunday. I've already gotten a couple of compliments from users about the improvements that our staff has prepared out there, that, you know, that I think were fairly low cost and seem to have hit the target, including a new little item out there that we'll unveil when we have our little grand opening. So, positive things.
Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, I did want to add one other thing, the transportation brochure that Mary brought up. We've asked the county to get our hands on that, to try to get those out. I thought that was an excellent publication and very informative for people that do want to use the public transportation we have here, so, and if you all know of any place that would like to help distribute that, I'm sure the county would be more than willing to get those out. Good, good document to inform people of a service in town that a lot of people aren't aware of. That's all I have.
Mr. Meeker.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to compliment Mr. Landon and the staff on their efforts on Project Koala. I think we made an extreme I think we made an extremely strong and competitive bid for that project, and it didn't work out. And it didn't work out, in my opinion, for the right reasons because we took a, we matched dollar for dollar what was being offered in Fort Myers, and when you look at our population compared to Fort Myers, that we're even competing with them dollar for dollar. It's amazing. But we did it in a responsible manner. We tied it to performance. I would be absolutely against just throwing money at a business that wants to come in here with absolutely no skin in the game. They, you know, these guys were talking about renting a building, not owning a building. They were going to bring a lot of their own employees and not necessarily hire everybody. They wanted $2 million, they got $2 million in cash incentives upfront with no strings attached. I cannot in good conscience take the taxpayers' dollars and just throw it at a project like that and hope that it's going to last for the long term. And any city council anywhere in the state of Florida that takes that kind of stance, if the project fails, they should-
They might as well go to the internet cafe and gamble their money. They get a better chance of getting it.
Gambling their money away. So, you know, Jim, you guys did a great job, and I am really glad you held the line on, you know, performance for the incentives. I think that's the way we need to do business, and I would be absolutely against just tossing money away needlessly that way. So congratulations.
Let me say amen to that.
We may have lost, but we won in other ways.
Well, and I appreciate that. I've heard other compliments. My response to that is, is it's nice to work for council that has clear direction, and you all basically given us that direction so that when we go into those discussions, we have some confidence that, you know, we will do it as a team versus individually. So been made very clear. I think we all are in agreement with that, and we'll continue. And we have others that we're working on, and we will continue to hold those standards. So, thank you.
Mr. Meeker, you're still up.
Well, then let's adjourn the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for your participation. Meeting is adjourned.